So I think we have six board members present. And Bill, are you there? Bill Rourke? Bill Rourke?
Okay. Can you hear me?
Are you there? Bill?
Yes.
Oh, good. Because I was going to call you on the phone.
All right.
That's better. It's better when you do that. You come through better.
All right. Good.
Looks like everything is present. Four members are present. The Land and Water Meeting has been voted for November 16, 2020. Board members. They want to review the minutes of the meeting of October 19, 2020. Through the minutes of the regular meeting of October 16, 2020. Are there any additions, revisions, or corrections?
This is Ann. I have two corrections, well, a couple of corrections, I think. On page 2298 and on 2299, there's references to Meredith saying something, but I think that was me, unless Meredith, you have different recollection.
Thank you. No, I just really can't tell the two ladies' voices apart. I guess I've just known the guys longer or something, but I'm struggling. So I believe you.
I know. I was asking Meredith if her recollection was the same.
No, I think you're right, Ann.
Okay. Yeah, we do sound alike.
And then on page 2300, where it's about a third of the way down, it says, "Say, Ms. Perdue asked if Lot B is..." First of all, you see that line? It's the beginning of a paragraph. Ms. Perdue asked.
Okay.
That should read, if, you should read, "Ms. Perdue asked if Lot B proposes a residential house."
Okay.
And then just about eight lines up from the bottom again. Ms. Perdue asked whether it was hard to get the variance. I asked whether it's hard to rezone to residential.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Anything else? If not, I have a motion.
Make a motion, no proof.
I second. This is Ann.
Motion's been made. Your motion is for a second. Ann? Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? Not too controversial. Most of the paper, aye? I heard two ayes and nothing else. Motion's defeated.
Oh, no. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I can tell I say it. I don't know that you can hear it.
First time I have a conference meeting through this evening is the Baker subdivision. Mr. Rourke, any further updates? Mr. Baker?
Any updates? Since the last meeting, we've put some spot elevations on. We've done the adjourners. We have, I think it was prior to the meeting, we adjusted the boundary line slightly. He wanted more fronted for a turnaround. That's about it.
And I also did give, I got some mapping to Bill so he could clarify the wetlands delineation. So that's as per what we have on the record in the DTC, first one, the DTC mapper. And then I also gave him a soils map, and he put the soil types are now on the flat, as you see there. I think I copied you all on that soils map. It was funny.
Yes.
And Mr. Martin, have we received all outstanding items for this submission?
Yes, I believe we have, as per the checklist from the last review. And also, we have a properly noticed public hearing as well.
Very good. And as far as I'm concerned, go backwards, and we'll review the EIA. Part one. Number one, the proposed action only involved the city and the document, the plan local law, where there's no state or local information responsible for that. The proposed action forbids federal funding from any other governmental agency. And, yes, that's why it was here. And the total area decided the proposed action included 59.8. Physically disturbed with presently zero. So, maybe 59.8. All lands occur in joining properly considered rural, residential, forest, and agricultural. Board, any questions on part one, one, two, five?
Nope.
No.
Six, a proposed action to prevent the use of zoning regulations, yes. Consistently does not comprehend the public responses, yes. Proposed action consistent with predominant characters of existing building natural landscape, response, yes. Is a site of proposed action located in, or does it enjoy an extinct listed CEA? Responses, no. Will proposed actions open to substantial increase in traffic above the present level? Responses, no. And are public transportation services available near the site of proposed actions? Responses, yes. Are any industrial accommodations available? Put the bill on, on here, the proposed action, responses, no. Court, questions on five through eight?
No.
No.
The proposed action may exceed state laws and code requirements? Response, yes. Is proposed action connect to existing projects, plans, or supply? Responses, no. Think it utilizes them well? Supposed action connect to existing wastewater facilities? Responses, no. Some dimension of the subject system? Does a proposed action contain any extension to the building? Also, outside of history, which is located in National Historic Historic Place? About a meter of share of the area of office and park, recreation, preservation? Will the elements of listing on state register, historic, responses, no. Is a project site, or any portion of it located in the J2, an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites? And then New York State Historic Preservation Office, Archaeological Site, and natural? Responses, no. Does any portion of the site of proposed action, lands, adjoining proposed action? If they're wetlands or underwater, but regulated by state or local agencies? Responses, yes. And would proposed action physically alter or approach between existing wetland or water? Responses, no. Court, questions on, I don't know, eight through thirteen?
No.
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I provide you a copy of part two and three there to go through the remainder of the assessment.
I don't have to have to type the copyright or likely found both sites. It's indicated as forests, agricultural grasslands, and herbivores. Does a site of proposed action contain any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? Responses, no. Is a project site located in 100-year flip land? Responses, no. Will proposed action be a standard, which carries either from point of origin, point sources? Responses, no. Is proposed action include construction methods that would result in the handling of water or liquid? Responses, no. The site of proposed action, a joint property, and the local is nitrous, proposed solid waste manager facility? Responses, no. The site of proposed action and joint property were the subject of remediation of hazardous waste? Responses, no. Board, any questions? Article one.
No.
No.
I have one, just one question. I read somewhere that if there was agricultural activity on this property or property within 500 feet, that there was supposed to be some kind of agricultural data assessment form?
I sent that out to you via email. You didn't get it?
No, I did not.
Okay. I sent an email, and that's a doubt that I, there is no agricultural assessment on this property. That's something that's done as a real property tax credit. The owner opted to not file for that, so there is no assessment done on this property.
Okay. I assumed it was some kind of assessment of the ground itself for agricultural purposes.
No. It's an assessment, it's a form that's filled out by, it's a New York State Department of Taxation form, and it does have data on it, all soil types and all that, and agricultural activities, but it's in the interest of qualifying for the tax credit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I pulled the records on it, and there's nothing filed for this property.
Yeah, I did get that earlier email. I didn't understand that that was the connection.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks much.
Yep.
Thank you. Article two. Now, who has the choices? No or small impact maker, or moderate to large impact maker, one or the other. One, proposed action create material conflict with the document, use plan or zoning regulations? Responses required?
No.
Noticeable.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Will proposed action result in the change or the use intensity of the use of land?
No.
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 Will proposed actions impair the character or quality of existing community?
No.
Will proposed actions have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions result in the headfirst change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, bike, and your walkway?
No.
Will proposed actions cause an increase in use of energy and fails to provide reasonable available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
No.
Public or private wastewater treatment facilities?
No.
No.
Will proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will proposed actions some of the headfirst change to natural resources such as wetlands, water, air quality, floor, or fossil?
No.
No.
Will proposed actions help an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
No.
Will proposed action create hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
I successfully completed part two, the environmental assessment form for the Baker subdivision. I have a motion for final notice to be prepared.
This is Meredith. I'll make a motion for the final notice to be prepared, and there is no, it's negative impact on the environment.
I second that, Stan.
I have a motion from Meredith to declare a negative declaration to the motion. I have a second.
I second. This is Ann.
Ann, thank you. Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman? Mr. Shaver? Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thias?
Yes.
Mr. Seebolt?
Yes.
Chairman?
And we should move speed limit on, as was legally advertised, or is it a public hearing?
Yeah, because I just clarified with Bill. Bill, did you put the sign off? Did the, here is?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. It's fun to get that on the record.
Effective immediately, based upon the note, and held by a physician, a federal, state, and local officials, related, the COVID-19 virus, a public hearing on application for force or last subdivision to 21, out of the internal, or we held a Monday, November 16, 2020, at 7:00, one, by a plane, teleconference. As permitted, by our state, the meeting law, executive order 202.1, said that the purpose of subdivision approximately 79.35 acres into four building lots, lots of proposed to have access on, on, against, road, and lot road. Due to public health and safety concerns, the public will not be permitted to attend to the remote location where board members, department head, or staff will be situated, or any other location. The public will be able to fully observe a video conference meeting, and will be able to comment during the public hearing. Having said all of that, if anyone has, would like to make a comment or statement concerning the Eric Baker subdivision?
I see no one indicated on our list here for the panelists or attendees, and we didn't get any written correspondence either.
Board, any questions, comments, concerns?
I have a couple of each. So, comment wise, it seems a little odd to me that lot number one and lot number four turned out to be the exact same acres. I don't know that it makes a whole lot of difference. I don't know if somebody did that intentionally, but they're completely on either end of the subdivision, and one is 29.3 acres, and the other one is 29.3 acres, and I just found that kind of odd. So with that in mind, that was just a humorous thing. Moving on from there, I'm a little concerned, and I just want somebody to clear off, if we have some location on lot number one, which obviously there's not a lot we can do about it at this point, with the wetlands that are delineated now on this map, do we have a location that we can actually get a driveway into that property if it is ever developed in the future? That's for you, Bill.
Yeah, if, there's plenty of room for a driveway between the wetlands and John Baker's property.
Okay. Asked and answered. That's all I needed to know.
Okay.
The only other thing is, you did notify every landowner within 500 feet of this, right?
Did I?
The town is responsible for that.
Yeah.
That wasn't aimed at you, Bill.
Okay.
But did we notify as per the requirements under the ag district?
Yeah. Kathy's got the notices out.
That is the end of my questions.
Going back to your comment, John, you make a good point, because I just did the math here among the four lots, and they don't add up to 83.68 acres.
Right.
78.682.
Yep.
If I go by the lot, the total for each lot, with lot total size for each lot, so we have a discrepancy of, let's see here, about five acres.
Well, I think what it probably is, is one of those two lots is 29.3 acres.
Well, I think I know what it is. I think, I think it's that, I think it's the lot that was previously subdivided, now is a two-lot subdivision, that's in the center of lot one.
Yeah.
That's where it is.
It's 5.18 acres.
Yeah, I think that might be what happened, is that the total reflects all that land area, not the one that was taken off of the previous two lots.
I'll check that.
Give me one second. Well, I just found it kind of odd that the two lots on either end ended up at exactly 29.3 myself. I just, so I thought maybe that...
Very odd. I'll check that.
Actually, if you include that 5.18 acre, and you're in, up to 83.86 acres, so...
We're in the neighborhood.
I think the total acres is fine. I just didn't know if maybe there was, somebody actually made it a point to do it that way, or if somebody just made a mistake in marking it. So it doesn't really matter much. It's all well within the five-plus acres, so...
But we should have accurate numbers on there for filing the account.
Yeah. Of course. Of course.
I will.
Any further order? If not, would you include it?
Make a motion to approve the Eric S. Baker subdivision?
Motion's been made to create approval to the Eric Baker subdivision?
The only thing I would suggest was the one condition, that the lot acreage be confirmed for a lot.
Second, I'm not, motion's been made, second. Further discussion? If not, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Ms. Thias?
Yes.
Mr. Seebolt?
Yes.
I have a whole bunch, motion carries. Board, is there anything further that would like to do?
Make a motion, the chairman and one of the members, on the mylar's completed.
Motion's been made, Mr. Bergman, to have the chairman and a member of the Land and Water Division sign mylars when they are presented. So the motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that one.
Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion? That one, I would, the controversial, most of the paper, aye?
Aye.
Well, Mr. Rourke and Mr. Baker, we thank you. As a term of, as always, fair play to you, have any further questions of us?
No. No, I want to thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Excited, I have agenda for the sitting, and it's Mr. Smith, site of land review. We have one of those.
Hey, Bill, it's your Mark calling from the town, Marrow, calling from the Plating Board meeting, and writing on the agenda, wondering if you're dying, dying, either of the three. I just called the cell phone, lucky enough.
Jim, can I ask a question while you're waiting?
Sure.
I saw here from the zoning, that he had to put some gravel stuff down there. That hasn't been done yet. Is that something we need to have done?
Yes, well, that's, the way this is supposed to work, I think, is these conditions are, because this is one of these very applications where it's subject to two reviews, one by the zoning board, one by the planning board. I would suggest that you work that condition in the York, or work well, and we make sure it all, okay, for at least.
Okay.
But we still technically have a pending application until it goes through your review.
So I wasn't talking on my phone, I was trying to find, I was trying to find what he had sent us last week, and I probably should just take it, print it out, and it'll be easier for me to put to the paper, because it's my phone.
I have to get that.
Yeah, right. We saw how long.
Well, we are in full, Mr. Baker, do you have anything further for us?
Yeah, so did everybody get a copy of the letter from Dave Whitbeck about TLC landscaping?
Yes.
He intends not submitting for the summer. And he was explanatory there, his reasons. Thing, two things I can tell you about that is, we explored the weight limit with highway requirement for known world, there is no weight limit. And then he also did approach Paul Joseph about, with an inquiry about potentially moving the driveway access, and Paul's resistant to doing that.
I also need that, entrance there.
Yes. So I think the primary reason he mentioned was, there's a telephone pole there on site, and he's concerned about that coming into play, and he just thinks it's best where it is. So that's all I can tell you.
Just, if you come down there, you're heading cell phone, and I, and you'll take it right out of the hole, and it's blind there, my concern is when he pulls out those triplane trucks and stuff.
Right. I did explain that to Paul, the idea that there's, he just feels it's best where it is. I mean, that's all I can tell you.
Do I have the right to be, Paul, to talk?
Sure.
Sure. I will do that.
Yeah. But other than that, I think Mr. Whitbeck is working, you know, on all the changes and clarifications that were requested, so we'll see that in the summer.
Will we find out about the salt there?
I put three calls into the DTC representative that there were some pending regulations about the private storage of salt. I don't think they were ever fully, like, promulgated.
Yeah.
They were almost, but not adopted. So I was just thinking to pick his brain about best practices, and I called the guy three times.
Really?
He does not answer the phone. So I will continue, I figured I would continue to do so, because we had, we won a month here with the applicants requesting table, and so, opponent, so I will continue to hold the guy at the DTC direction.
All right. Is the discussion with Paul, were you involved with that, with him saying that?
Yes. I talked to him directly, twice.
Really?
Yeah. So, but yeah, I encourage anybody else who wants to reach out in that matter. I talked to him directly.
But again, I'm concerned with cell phone taking it right out of the hole, and it's blind there.
And the zoning ordinance will be, at the end of this week, I call the first of the draft of the new section. It's quite a tedious process, because I'm, I'm into the first five sections, and I got the first new district almost written, and that is a single-family residential, the R1. But what I'm doing, I'm making sure that every use that we have listed is defined in the code. Some uses are not defined at all, even in the single-family residential, and then there's some other uses that the definitions, in my opinion, are faulty or out of date. So we're, I'm proposing new definitions. So you'll be getting that whole package, you'll be getting those first five sections, the first new district, use, the eventual tables, and the updated definitions through that section. And that's the way I'll do it. As we work through every district in the code, I'll make sure that all the uses are defined, and we have updated definitions. And these are all draft, obviously, for comment, but that's what I have. That's about the end of this week.
Hey, Jim, it's Meredith. How would you like comments back if we have them?
Well, what I'm going to do, you weren't part of the last system, when we did the campaign. I'm going to propose to you, on this first go-around, you're going to get a track changes version of the suggested draft, and you'll also get a changes accepted version. So, because some people like the, they like the track to changes, but others don't like reading all that, you know, crossing out something that's hard to read, so I provide both versions, so you can see it, what changes were made, and what it looks like in a clean copy. And then what I would suggest you do is you can give your comments back in several ways. You can either email with just a note, you know, that says, I'm paying such and such, you know, you know, I make this comment. You can write it in the margin and send it in to me, or you can track changes in your clean copy and type in your changes out, however you feel most comfortable with it. Um, and, and I'll get those changes or those suggestions for revision and comment, um, and I'll make those changes that come back, depending on what you say, and that'll be in the next version, you'll get those changes, so that'll be, that first section will be done, because we'll have received all the comments from you, as well as zoning board, and the town board are going to be afforded the same opportunity, and then I'll move on to the next set of sections, and we'll do the same thing over again, and we'll just work our way through the code with that system, until we get a complete draft cover of it. All right? And, and obviously, just because we completed one set of sections, doesn't mean that's your last opportunity to comment, you really can comment about any piece of it at any time, but the focus will be these sections as they're set. All right?
Jim, what is the status of the solar power law?
The solar power law, I understand, uh, the board had another work session on it, um, I think they're getting close, they've been very diligent about working through it, um, I'd say timeframe wise, this is just my personal opinion based on what I've seen, I would think by, um, January, February, they'll have a, a copy ready for, for public comment. They're really.
When, when will the planning board get to see it?
Um, you'll see it at the same time, it's, it's, um, they've gone through it, and got something they all agree upon, the meeting, the five board members and the town board, they will send it off to the planning board for review and recommendation, and that's also be the version that's posted for public comment as well. So it should be roughly that same time, and here's Bill Smith. Hello, Bill? This is Jim Martin. Good, I was, you're on the planning board agenda tonight. Okay, um. Boy, if you're, the, the board's here, ready to go through your applications, so I can, I can put you on speaker. Okay, hold on. And I have Bill Smith on.
What's the story?
One second, Jim. You don't have a. Jimmy, there?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right. So we've got about 2% left. Not so different, but I apologize, I didn't realize, again, you know, I was waiting for an email, like a Zoom meeting, and I didn't know you were discussing it amongst the, the board, and then you're going to give me a call, or?
No, I, if I, if I wasn't clear about that, Bill, that's on me, I thought, I thought you knew the meeting was tonight, and that was that, but that's on me.
Why, I thought it was a meeting, but I thought, because it was a Zoom meeting, I thought you were going to take the paperwork to the, to the members, and then I was going to have a, a Zoom meeting at, at later date, so it's not a big deal.
What's that?
This man, I'm trying to do something, I go out to the truck, plug my, uh, phone in, so it doesn't go dead, give me two minutes, okay?
Okay. This is really not a, kind of a big deal. Kind of a housekeeping thing. I, I thought, you know, Bill has been at these meetings before, I thought he was aware.
So there's.
Yeah, we're here. I, I'm, I'm sorry for springing this on you, I, I.
I have to come in, you know, again, to come check today, and yes, well, must be just, uh, demo to the source. So I was going to go with, uh, see more, second.
Yeah, we can hear you. Can everybody hear him okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we got the, the plan out in front of us here, um, and we're just, the board's just beginning their review. And I, I just saw, I did send around, uh, uh, the special permit that you received from the zoning board, and the notice of decision last to the, uh, board members, so they're aware of that, um, and I also did some staff, though, but I think I, I sent you a copy on as well.
Yes, and you sent me a copy of that, so. In, in the zoning board, all that stuff.
Yeah, okay. All right. Is there anything you wanted to add, Bill, or anything to introduce the application, or?
But no, I, I didn't realize, to be honest with you, uh, that I, I thought I just had it originally, started out going to the zoning board, just to make sure that we were, you know, the zoning was right for what we were doing now, um, you know, I can go over a little bit with everybody that the, the property is, is being sold to second property LLC, which is just Carriage Traders, Mike Romeo, I have a contract, and eventually, I guess, he should have brought it back now, he hasn't, but he was going to stone the parking lot, and I talked to him recently, he said he was going to do it, it's just that they bought Toyota blunt haul, and he's just been training you with that, training back, and, and, but other, you know, other than that, I, we provided everything that's in the zoning board, no signs, no lights, uh, you know, no public sales on the lot, just for wholesale, wholesale pickup, cars are there no more than a week, or a week and a half at the most where they're picked up, and there's always a turnaround of cars. But, uh, they have two more years, and they're going to own that property.
What, what's the two-year delay, what do you mean by order?
Well, because I gave them, uh, the three-year contract, where they're going to leave it from me, and at the third year, they're, they're going to buy it outright.
I see. So it's a lease sale type thing?
Yeah, but it's two contracts, I, I did, you know, with the contract, it's certain, so it's not just defining contract, as I say.
Okay.
But letting it, Mike Romeo.
So what is your intent in this ensuing two and a half years or whatever?
Did you hear that, Bill? Peter, what's your intent in the, in the ensuing two years?
My intent?
Is, is it just going to be for automobile storage?
You know, that's all they're doing right now, it's just, it's not storage, it's just, it's basically their overflow, they have such a terrible business that it was hard to have cars parked in, in their, you know, and have trucks being out and pulling in, and do their display of cars, so these are the wholesale parts that they either take in and fade in, they're high miles, and they wholesale, and then they just get picked up. So what is their intention, I have to be honest with you, I'm not sure, um, eventually, he said, down the road, he wants to see that they've just taken that corner, and, and, uh, they're redoing some of that, that building for service work, so I'm not really sure what their intention is down the road.
Do we have anybody from Carriage Traders on the, on the call?
No.
I think that would have been helpful to understand what the operation is. Although I appreciate, Bill, you're being on the phone, I, I think that is, it's great to have you too.
So no, I, I understand, uh, Mike actually was involved with the zoning.
Yeah, he was on for the zoning board meeting, I remember, um.
And he, he simply said, you know, I don't think he really, you know, for now, why, you, you, yeah, for wholesale, I'm not sure.
Yeah, and I think.
Possibility garage, did, did service work, I'm not sure what he wants to do.
Yeah, I, I would have liked to ask them, um, very particularly, I guess, about what this operation is going to, you know, entail with even up to 100 vehicles that will be turned around, taken, you know, on and off the lot within a week and a week half time, using car haulers on Route 9, I mean, it's, I, I would like to hear how that's going to work, and I, I feel like, I don't think that's something you're necessarily, um, well-versed in.
The trailers that they use are basically for two and three car, cars at a time, they don't have these big car haulers, you know, maybe they have, to be honest, I don't know, but what, what he said was, they're just, they're two or three go at a time, and I can see tractor trailers that come in, it, it's easier, to be honest with you, for tractor, if there was a tractor trailer or car hauler, it would be easier, go in there, and then just block traffic and try to pull into Carriage Traders where there's no room, no room to back out, no one to turn around, so it's actually safer where they're going in now.
This is Meredith, I would like to see something like that, because I, there isn't room right now for a car hauler to pull in there safely, and if they aren't from around here, and they try to pull left, it's a nightmare, and with the cars up front, close right now, there isn't a lot of room, um, and I've seen a car carrier pull in front of the old diner there and try to back in, um, so right now, the way the site plan sits, it, it still is difficult for a car carrier to pull in there.
We certainly do have stacked up on Route 9, have enough of those problems, turnaround is outside, outside of the street.
So it's, I, it looks like, um, you know, there, there's 150 some spaces shown here on this plan, you know, I, I understand it's very packed in, uh, I think it's 157, and I think there might even be actually more than that shown, but yet, the, the limits in the zoning board, if you recall, was 100 cars. So what I'm suggesting is, what I'm hearing so far is the board would like to see some sort of a, you know, I think internal to the site loading area, and so maybe there needs to be a little bit of a revision here that lowers the car storage down to 100, that's limited by your special use permit from the zoning board, and then use that extra area to show how you might have a, you know, a loading and unloading area for the cars internal in the site.
By loading and unloading, it's right to, to statement, that's, right from the front, where they pull in, and drive the car up, which is all Route 9, that property goes all the way over to around that, that garage, right up to the driveway, pretty much, we were, we haven't parked car, we haven't, because we wanted green space, and we didn't want to crowd that area, so, and I don't know how many cars are there right now, I, I haven't counted them, it would go hard, just put spaces in, even if you put spaces in, and we agreed a lot, 100 spots, now, again, it's been functional like this for a year, and there's been no issues.
Guys, if you need to do that here, how is going to get access, so you can turn around and be able to take out, you have radiuses on there, five, whatever, demonstrate that you can do it, because we cannot have a bottom like I have now.
And if it's been going on for a year, then it shouldn't be any problem to show how it's been going on and, and put it on paper, so it's easy for us to, to see how it's been happening, uh, Jim, if you could just clear up one thing with me for the zoning thing, it would seem to me that, what, their determination was, they, they determined that this was what for a special permit?
Um, hold on.
Because the reason I'm asking is, when I first saw this site plan, my first thought is, this is warehousing within 300 feet of, of Route 9, so I'm assuming they gave a variance to the, the zoning against warehouses within 300 feet?
This came in as a special use permit, it is automobile sales.
But we're not selling any vehicles from here. Right?
Well.
Hopefully, I'll not retail.
That being sold to the public, as part of the, it's not a, a used car lot, per se, where you, you can go to the public, go in, look at cars, it's not.
Okay.
Well, as explained that night is, as I recall, the zoning board meeting, was that there could be a car for sale here, it's in, it's in their inventory, but it's not on the main retail lot at the, where the scriptural room is, so the salesman goes up to this lot, gets the car, and brings it back to the sales office, and then the customer can see it there. That was explained at the zoning board, so although it's not the actual, I don't know what you want to term the sale, is, is the contract signed on this lot? No, but the car that's for sale is on this lot.
All right, so this is an auto sales lot, this is not a warehousing lot, this isn't just auto storage.
Correct, I disagree with that.
Well, that, that's what I remember, but I can pull a minutes.
Well, Mike on the phone, I disagree with that, it was, it was wholesale, because there were traded in that were going to be wholesale, it's sold, it's wholesale, it's not to the customer.
All right, still, still auto sales.
So it's still, I'm just trying to figure out what the zoning board had to approve for a special use permit.
It was for auto sales.
Okay, but auto sales are allowed, and auto sales are allowed in our commercial zone.
Correct.
So why was there a need for a special use permit?
Because if you look at, if you look at the use schedule, use is permitted by special permit by the zoning board appeals, automobile sales.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's all I wanted to know. And I would join the others in saying, I'd just like to see ingress, ingress and egress plans, and, um, oh, gosh, the, the degree curves that we haven't put in, just to show that a tractor trailer, or whatever vehicle's moving these things in and out, can get in and out, and where they, where they're expected to go in and out, I fully agree that this has been functioning for a year, um, I have never heard anybody complain about backed up traffic, or, you know, trailers having troubles getting in and out, I'd just like to see how it's going codified on the plan itself, so it's just a matter of drawing lines, should be easy enough to do.
Yeah, I can, I can take the, uh, the survey, is that what you're saying, as I've taken back to Bill Rourke, and as I do, I mean, I, I think what you're asking for is where the tractor trailer is pulling in the front, and where the, I mean, you know, you, there's no, you're not supposed to sign the field, you're not supposed to interact.
No, 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 it's just right now, when I'm looking at this plan, I see two 10-foot wide access drives, one of them actually runs right up to a curb island on the edge of Route 9, all right, so I know that nobody's driving out that 10 feet and over the curb island to get onto Route 9, and then the other one is on the southern end of it, and it goes straight back to the cars, but we, we all know that that's not how the trailers are coming in and loading and leaving, so I just want to see, I, I want to see turning radiuses, I just want to see that it's possible to do it, I'm sure it is, like I said, I haven't heard that there's any problems, and I'm pretty sure the cars have been changing hands there, so I just want to see it on the map here, so that we can say this is how it is.
I, I think the basic problem is, Bill, that Bill Rourke did one thing here, and this site is actually operating in a different fashion, and the site plan doesn't reflect what, how the site operates.
And to be honest, if the zoning board approved 100 spaces, there should be 100 spaces on it, not 157.
Okay. Well, I can try to go back to Bill Rourke with having put 100 spaces in. It didn't draw where the tractor trailers come in and out.
Yep.
Again, I haven't been there because I do work. But the, the whole way, even when I own a restaurant in Dr. Kathy's across the street, tractor trailers pulled in and out of there all day long, hard to go get something to eat.
Yep.
It was never uncommon to have a tractor trailer in there. APW used to call it there for state, and they would stop eating. They're a big truck, you know. So it's not a big deal to draw something, show where they, you know. But again, I can draw whatever you want me to draw. Just a key that every driver is going to enter or exit the way that it's drawn. But they've certainly been picking the cars up, you know, without any interest before. But, you know, I guess, you know.
Did we lose them?
Still there, Bill?
Yeah.
And this is Ann. I still would like to understand the kind of volume of traffic that this is going to generate with 100 vehicles. I don't know how many vehicles are on there presently or had been there before. But if there's going to be a turnaround of this lot every week or week and a half, in other words, a whole new bunch of cars, I'm just trying to envision what that looks like. I don't know that that's what's been happening so far.
Could you say that again, Ann?
Yeah. Okay. I'm still, I'm still interested in knowing more about the logistics of the operation. How it is that there'll be 100 vehicles that will turn over every week or week and a half. I don't know that that's what they've been doing to date. They may have had fewer vehicles or not turned them over as frequently. But that sounds like, you know, an algebra question on an exam. How many trips with a three-car hauler will it take to turn over the lot every week and week and a half?
Yeah. I, I, I think turning over the whole lot is kind of optimistic. I mean, I drive by this thing all the time. And some of the vehicles are there for weeks on end and some cycle. But it's very, it's often to frequent that you'll see like a, like a one-ton duly or an F-550 with a ramp trailer with three or five vehicles, you know, going in and out. It's almost, it's almost common that you don't, so common that you don't see it. It's a, you kind of just get used to it. You know, it's, it's pretty frequent that there's a car hauler in there. They're just not the tractor trailer type. They're the smaller-
I haven't been to tractor trailers. Are you seeing two or three car hauler? Hopefully, you said, and everybody's here. But because you see when the wholesalers, they're only buying two or three cars at a time, and then they take them to the other.
Bill, do you think it's possible to get Mike at the next meeting?
Yeah, he's got to be at the next meeting, yes. I promise. Yeah, I didn't realize. I thought, because it's been approved already, we've already been down this road of what was going on. I thought the planning board is just basically to, I had no idea why we ever were the planning board. This to me, maybe I'm naive, but I just, because it's zoning board, I guess. And he said we couldn't put signs and lighting or anything like that noise. Nobody's loading carts at night, waking neighbors up. I thought the zoning board was just to basically, for, you know, green space or whatever. This whole operation, we've already gone over. And it's already been approved. So I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we're doing this again.
Yeah. It's a quirk of this particular code, Bill.
Well, this isn't the first time that this particular property's been in front of the planning board for a change of use approval.
No, I had sheds there. You had to have tractor trailer to pull in the sheds. There were long, it was two or three sheds on the back of the long truck, driving in, put sheds out, and then drive out. So-
And we had that on the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So what I'm hearing is they need a revised plan with the accurate vehicle storage area shown, both in terms of its location and number. And then an access plan for how trucks actually come in and out of the site. And have the representatives from Carriage Traders here to address logistical questions.
Yeah. I mean, the access plan is basically just has to show that it can be done. That's it. I mean, it's not like you're going to be paving a road and putting lines on it or anything. You're just going to show us with radiuses how it can be done and where it would be done. Yeah. And I do think if the zoning board approved for 100 spaces, it should show 100 spaces.
I'm good with all that. I have no problem doing that. To be honest with you, I would like to go to Bill Rourke. If it's 15 yards of weed with 100 spaces in it, where the tractor trailer or the car hauler, they pull in, pick up, regardless of the direction, where, you know.
Bill, if you want to come in and see me sometime between now and the next admission date, I'll be happy to go over with you. We can mark one up.
Absolutely. Yeah.
All right. Because the next admission date, I believe, is December 7. So this is that first Monday.
Okay. So I'll keep going on that.
Yeah. And then the next meeting is December 21.
Okay. Yeah, no, I have no problem with that. No problem. Finally, what we need to do. I'm not trying to be argumentative, I do.
Although we're kind of catching up to argue here too. I should have told you the meeting was tonight.
Yeah, all right. I see everything. Good.
Bill, this is Ann. The lot to the north of the parking area, that's your property, right?
Mr. Bill?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So it's, it's my property. I hold a note on it, but it's, it's, you know, owned by Terry and LaBarre. And that's, you know, contract. He just has another seven years to pay for it. When he's paying for it, then it's his property. Originally, I was leasing him that property because I used to do car shows. And I'm doing, I needed that property for what my restaurant was doing. He's not doing the same business as I did, and he didn't need the property. So after two years, he said, Bill, I don't need it. I don't want to keep paying for it. And that's, that's why it didn't go with the business. And I got to be honest, I was trying to figure out what to do with the property. It's a part of another business. And I just couldn't, because it's not really a wide lot, deep lot, I should say. Got a lot of road curbs, but it's not deep. It has no tour. So there wasn't much I could do with it. Everybody was quiet. Well, listen, I will, if nobody has any more questions, what I will do, give up minutes to you, and I appreciate your help. And I will take in the-
A question for Peter. Do you think the board's going to want to have a public hearing on this? Should we consider that for December, or you want to wait for it?
We should find out what we're actually looking at before we do schedule anything else.
Understood.
And Jim, you were at the zoning board meetings. Did they have a public hearing?
Yes, they did.
Any of the neighbors, particularly the backyard residents, have any comment?
Nope. We did not get any comments. But I do think they took some proactive measures with, you know, the prohibition against signing and any lighting to keep the impacts down. And the 100-car version.
They have the parking going right-
Go ahead, Ann.
Parking goes, the parking goes right up against the rear lot line, where there's a chain link fence. I was curious as to whether or not the residents, if they understood that's the way it was going to look, would have some concerns about the proximity of the vehicles.
Oh, we'll try and get some buffer in there when we have a plan redrawn.
Okay.
Ann, I think I know where you're going with it myself. I got to say, it is commercial zone there, but it's not unrealistic for us to ask a commercial applicant to do something to mitigate any kind of conflict between their property and the residences in the back. So-
And there may, there may be some conflict as well on the properties to the south.
Yeah. So I mean, it might not be out of the question to ask for them to put some kind of privacy fencing along that, just to try and do a little bit of something to buffer the, I'm not going to say it's a conflict, but basically buffer the interaction between the commercial and the residential in that situation.
I agree with that, John.
I think we also need to determine just where the boundary line is for the zone. Is that C102 or-
Right.
That doesn't extend unless we have a fee or something. Because we have code in the commercial, joint and residential, above was required. But if it's joint and commercial, then there isn't a requirement.
Correct. Yep. So can we get that on the map?
Yes.
Thank you.
You still there, Bill?
I'm here.
Okay. All right. Anything else? I'm not hearing anything. So Bill, you don't need to see me?
I was going to see you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Lord, for listening. And we'll figure it out.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Bill. Anything else before he gets off?
Nope.
I think you're all set then, Bill.
All right. Have a great night.
You too. Thanks for getting on on such short notice.
No problem. Thank you.
Yep.
I hope you have a lesson in minutes. We need to go back and correct ourselves and get ourselves out of trouble. And that is for the approval of subdivision for Mr. Baker. We jumped a gun, but we can correct that. If we have a motion to waive the requirement for preliminary and final approval being a separate meetings, and I carry forward from there. Because going back through everything I had, we've never granted preliminary approval to Baker. So one, two, we ought to try and keep the egg off the face as much as possible. We, I think we can correct it tonight by a couple of simple motions. We need to do them. And yes, I need to, because I'm in trouble.
So make a motion that we waive the requirement?
Motion been made to waive- Uh, motion by John. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Here. Motion's been made to second to waive the requirement for preliminary and final approval being a separate meeting for the Baker subdivision. And further discussion. If not, to call a roll, please.
Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Mrs. Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Seabolt?
Yes.
Chairman?
I have a motion carried. Board, if anything, running, Mike, you got it. Grant final approval.
All right. So you need a motion for final approval, Peter?
Final approval, yes.
Make a motion that we grant final approval to the Baker, or Eric Baker subdivision?
Motion's been made to grant final approval to Eric Baker subdivision. Do you motion by him second?
Don't we have to subject it to the confirmation of acreage?
It is conditioned on that. I have that down as a condition of the approval.
Okay.
Motion's been made to second. Mike, you got it. And further discussion?
Do we have a second on that one, Peter?
My mic.
Okay. All right. So here's my question, and I know this is going to muddy the waters, but don't we already have a final approval on this?
We have an approval. They're classified as a final or preliminary. So we'll have-
Okay. I wanted to make sure that because I thought maybe we already did a final approval. Maybe we need to go back and do a preliminary to go along with our waiving the 30-day waiting period. But if we already have an approval, that could count as our preliminary, then this is our final.
That would be, because we can't go back.
Okay.
We can't prove something before we have the ability to approve it.
Okay.
It's one of the things.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
If not, go roll, please.
Mr. Arnold?
Sure.
Mr. Bergman?
Yes.
Mr. Shaver?
Yes.
Ms. Perdue?
Yes.
Mrs. Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Seabolt?
Yes.
Chairman?
I have a motion carried. Board, thank you. If you've done with that, I don't think I have anything else except to wish you a beautiful family's happiness and holidays. And let her walk. Watch out for the fire.
Thank you, Peter.
Do I have a solid motion?
May I motion to a parent?
Motion's been made.
My second is Meredith's second.
Meredith, motion made second, all is good, right?
Right.
Approves, extensions, motion carried. Board, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, guys.
It won't be long until we say Merry Christmas, Adam. Hey, Jim? Yes?